Our special meeting study session of the Daily City Housing Development Finance Agency is Monday, July 8th. Our first item on the agenda is a discussion on the development of housing successor agency parcel at Carter Martin Streets. Zimmerman, go ahead.
I'll begin the presentation, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the Housing Finance Development, Housing Development Finance Agency. This evening's staff has prepared for your information and discussion options to consider regarding the disposition and development of the housing successor parcel located at Carter and Martin Street in the Bay Shore neighborhood in the city of Daly City. By way of background, the housing asset attached to your packet as Attachment 1, and Tatum will show you a map preceding my presentation, is approximately 12.5 acres of property fronting Carter and Martin Street in Daly City, which is adjacent to the 77, approximately 77.58 acres of Cow Palace property and 11.16 acres of vacant property owned by the Sayufi family. The Carter Martin property was formerly owned by the former redevelopment agency of Daly City. In 2012, upon the dissolution of the Daly City Redevelopment Agency, the authority for the former redevelopment housing functions transferred to the Daly City Housing Development Finance Agency, which is the board before you today, to take over the housing functions and assets of the former RDA. As a result, the former RDA Carter Martin property originally purchased with low moderate income funds was transferred to the finance agency as the housing successor agency and housing asset to be retained for affordable housing purposes. Pursuant to new legislation SB 341, the legislation governed former assets of the former redevelopment agency and established how housing successor agencies should dispose of their properties and required housing successor agencies to make diligent efforts to proceed in development of the property. At disposition, California law restricted how housing successor land funds may be utilized. By way of summary, it's as discussed in your packet, specifically, housing assets sold are subject to new affordability requirements for low moderate income funds of housing, former housing assets of the RDA. For example, if the agency transferred the property to a developer for construction of a project that did not provide the extent and level of affordability, subject to the affordability restrictions, the sale proceeds would be deposited in the low moderate income housing fund and restricted to affordable housing activities set forth in the Health and Safety Code. The law is pretty extensive in terms of what is required for affordability restrictions, so I did highlight several of the restrictions for the funds. And that is 30% of the funds must be expended for rental housing for households less, earning 30% or less on area median income. There are specific requirements for restrictions for senior housings, homeless programs, and state mandated reporting requirements, meaning excess surplus funds that are not encumbered within four years of deposit, deposited in the low moderate income fund shall be returned to the state authority for statewide housing purposes. For further options and discussions on development on the land use options and the development processes and proceedings, I'm going to turn that over to Tatum for further discussion in the presentation.
Okay, well, Ms. Zimmerman did a great job of describing the property, but we have a map here, and this is sort of in its context. The housing asset piece is sort of this L-shaped property here. This is Carter Street, this is Martin Street, and then you have Geneva Avenue up here. Directly to the north, you have a privately owned property owned by Sayufi, it was the former drive-in theater. And then north of that, you have an overflow parking lot for the Cow Palace. And then the whole entire Cow Palace sort of wraps around the two properties as well. So this is Cow Palace 2. To the west and to the south is single-family development. So in May of 2019, this city retained the firm of BKF Engineering to prepare a study of the site's development capacity. BKF Engineering prepared three concept drawings showing development potential under three scenarios, and I'm going to go into those. First, obviously, the site plan has been flipped, so now you have Carter Street at the top and Martin Street over here, but this is north to this direction here. So this first scenario that was submitted is a high-density, multifamily rental scenario. The study suggested a holding capacity of about 500 units. The drawings showed six buildings, these brown buildings here, that are about four or five stories with 75 to 90 units per building, and then three garages, which are shown in gray here, which in total would contain about 750 parking spaces. As an affordable housing development, this type of housing could be suitable for a range of incomes, including households with very low incomes, and could include units set aside for groups with critical needs like veterans or emancipated foster children. This next scenario is a medium-density ownership townhouse development. This one shows a total of 170 townhouse units spread across the property at about a density of 13.7 units to the acre. Each unit would have two parking spaces in addition to 85 guest parking spaces. This type of development would be best suited as an ownership product and could be targeted to moderate-income households. And then the third scenario is a combined-density concept. This one includes a mix of townhomes and apartments. This one's showing 85 townhomes, which are these smaller ones on the perimeter of the site, and then 240 apartments that are interior to the site with a separate garage. What's important to note about all of these development concepts that have been shown to you this evening is that they're very conceptual at this point. So BKF Engineering has identified a variety of site constraints that need to be considered further for future development, including topography, environmental remediation, sensitive biological species. So there's other things to consider when looking at this. So tonight's staff is looking for some direction from the council on a preferred development scenario. Obviously, this is preliminary, so this isn't exactly what it would look like, but it gives you a feel for, you know, what kind of densities maybe, you know, who you would want to target for a development in this location. So that's kind of it for the slides, actually. Well, we can go back to that if we need to. There are several options for how the agency might want to proceed with disposition and development of this property. First, the agency could pursue additional studies of the site to gain a fuller understanding of the property's limitations and development potential. These studies might include evaluation of topographical and environmental constraints that were just previously mentioned. The agency could also obtain an appraisal of the site to better understand the true market value of the land, which would inform any price negotiations with a prospective developer. The agency could also proceed with entitlementing the land for the preferred land uses. Entitlementing the land prior to selling it would increase the land value and ensure that the development program for the site most closely aligns with the agency's affordable housing goals and larger vision for the Bay Shore neighborhood. In 2004, a master plan was prepared for the city that focused on the Cow Palace, the Sayufi-owned parcel, and the agency-owned property, and found that the value of all the parcels would be significantly higher if redeveloped under one integrated master plan than if redeveloped separately. So one option that the agency could consider would be refining the work of that master plan to reflect current market demands and emphasizing affordable housing. Such approach would allow for a well-coordinated and efficient utilization of the site by encouraging developments to follow natural boundaries rather than arbitrary property lines. More efficient site utilization could have the impact of reducing overall development costs, which would allow for greater inclusion of uses with particular public benefits. So whether or not the agency chooses to do additional studies, there are three options for how the agency could consider disposing of the property. The first option would be to do a request for proposal, or what's also known as an RFP. Most typical with public agency land dispositions is to circulate an RFP to developers. Under this scenario, the agency could set certain parameters like number and type of residential units, preferred income targeting, and any other desired site features. The advantage of an RFP is that it allows the agency to understand the full scope of developer interest and market support for the envisioned development. The open nature of an RFP process can encourage creativity and competition among developers and result in proposals that offer the best possible development outcome to the city. The RFP process provides opportunities to include the larger community in the developer selection process, and the agency could circulate an RFP publicly and accept proposals from all interested parties. A second option would be to do a targeted request for proposals. So alternatively, the agency could circulate an RFP to selected developers, which is a less formal process than the process I just mentioned prior. So for example, a targeted RFP process could circulate to nonprofit developers or developers with experience in developing a certain residential product. Although competitive bidding is not required for the disposition of housing assets, it may be advisable for the agency to issue some form of request for qualifications or request for proposal because there have been multiple developers interested in the site. A targeted RFP would still outline the agency's requirements for the property, such as, you know, the number of units, the affordability, and those sorts of parameters. And then, you know, the next, the third option would be if the council had a developer that they wanted to work with directly, and immediately they could select that developer. So with that, I mean, I think the council sees, or the agency sees, that this is an amazing, rare opportunity to have a parcel of this size to be able to develop. And so staff is looking for direction on, you know, generally what development concept seems ideal, if there's, what the affordability targets may be, and also what process they would like to direct staff to engage in to select a developer.
So before we proceed with some discussion, let me just make the general announcement first that normally at a study session, we don't allow public comment because it's just to give staff direction. However, today, I think, is important enough. I see a lot of members of our community and the general public who are here today. So if you would like to, I'll give you two minutes. If you want to speak, please fill out a speaker card, and then just get it to us as soon as possible so we can have you up.
Speaker card's in the desk.
Oh, there isn't? Okay. Oh, there we go. He'll get it to you. Thank you. All right. Okay, so while they're doing that, let me open up to the floor of the council and see if you have any questions or issues you'd like to present. Ms. Manal, I think you had your microphone ready?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Well, I think that my sentiment is we have this large piece of land that, right now, we do have a housing crisis in the Bay Area, and we have an opportunity to have more housing in Daly City. You know, and also, in particular, you know, this is, this site, in general, we have the site location up, has so much potential to be able to serve the residents' needs in the Bay Shore community. I've heard echoing from the community in the past around, you know, it being a food desert, not having access to just a grocery store, and so I know we're talking about particularly our development at hand, which is the housing, but also looking at it in a larger perspective as well, knowing that all of the adjacent land pieces that you've mentioned, parcel A, B, and C are all connected together. In regards to the housing piece, I think it's important for us to assess what is the most we can do with this amount of land, given, looking at, and I'd like to know from staff, like, how many other areas do we have designated in Daly City that has opportunities like this? So that's a question I have. But most definitely, if we are at a time where we can holistically, once again, look at the site, you know, I think that that's also another approach. But that's my sentiment, what is the most that we can do with the site? I know we have preliminary studies here with BKF, but also, I'd like to know what we have at hand in generally for the whole Daly City, like what land sites do we have?
If I may?
Go ahead.
So this is the only piece that's owned by the agency that would be available for development. Our housing element actually has a list of sites that could be developed for housing, and so we do have a variety of sites throughout the city. Should the development community and the property owner be ready to go, they could, you know, propose some development. But that's privately held land, so you have to sort of wait until either the property owner or somebody from the community is ready to develop it. So we do have a variety of sites, and, you know, periodically we do-
I guess for clarification, not necessarily land that we own as Daly City, not necessarily privately owned, yeah.
Okay, yeah, so this is it?
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. I see some speaker cards. Maybe we can also get started on those. You want to, ma'am, did you have some speaker cards ready?
Yeah.
Okay. Could we? Anyone else? Don't be shy, please. We need your, thank you.
Does that mean I get more time?
No. Let me start with, okay, I hope I say this right. Is it Zenica?
Zenya.
Zenya. Zenya. All right, so Guterreski? No.
Oh, man.
Sorry. Sorry. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for having this session.
Of course.
And I'm glad some of our friends are here. I want to speak about, number one, these site plans. They are totally unrealistic. I understand this is preliminary, but you should have someone who really can give you a good base. I looked at this at 1:00 in the morning, well, more like 2:00, but you have a site plan that shows a garage that's five stories high next to a building that's three, facing north or southwest. Where is the sun? How is that sun going to hit a home? There is big problems there with every single one of these sites. Okay, so that was 2:00 in the morning. If we are supposed to be going green, and everybody's going green here, we're supposed to be getting out of our cars. I don't see any site that shows that we're going to have public transportation that will take people to BART or take them to Third Street to get, you go to different parts of the city when you're going to San Francisco, or let alone Samtrans if you're going a little further south. So that's another issue. There's no services here. Post office, Safeway, Lucky's, Dr. Sawyer, Indian Chief Bakery, Laundromat, well, these should all have high-end laundry in sight. So those are just kind of basic things that I was seeing before hit the bricks last night. I also, my main concern, because I live in Saddleback, is on all these site plans. I don't see how people are going to get in and out of any of these complexes. So we have a real issue with, as we do now, with Carter Street being a major roadway that connects one part of Daly City going through to Guadalupe, down Carter to Geneva.
Okay.
We can't get out of our driveway in the morning. We can't get out of our complex in the morning. Some, it's, it's a, it's a big issue.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Time is up?
Yes, ma'am.
I don't get any extra?
No. Sorry. Mae Swanbeck?
Oh, God.
All right.
We're also known as the crazy ladies of Saddleback.
Oh, okay.
Who loves it, I know.
Hello. I'm taking a slightly different approach, one, we're glad you're developing it, simply because you'd be on the same handle that Brisbane is in not developing the Baylands. You'd be told by the state to do it, or they would do it. So I'm glad you're being proactive in doing it. But also, I'm concerned with, not concerned, but looking at Midway Village, which is a huge development, 555, the Cow Palace, which is going to be an enormous development, Schleidlau, which is going to be huge, and the Baylands, which is going to be huge. This is not even considering the adjacent property next to us that's going to be developed, or the Overlook, or the, one of the other places on Geneva that's going to be developed. My concern is social services in terms of duplication. You've got areas both in San Francisco near the Baylands, Daly City, Brisbane, and South San Francisco with huge developments. Are you going to duplicate services that can be held by one and serve the other? In other words, it's money. Don't duplicate services you don't have to get together with these folks. Talk about what you can do as a unit together. And watch out for traffic, because it's going to be horrendous. And I lived in New York City. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Then we have Brad Wheelan.
Well, buoyed by your residents. Happy to, happy to follow on. My name's Brad Wheelan. I'm with Bridge Housing. We're a nonprofit developer here based in San Francisco, and we're engaged in projects of this scale in two or three different places. One at a place called the Balboa Reservoir in San Francisco, where we're planning 1,100 units on 17 acres. We're doing similar work in LA and also other parts of San Francisco. Firstly, I commend you on kind of having this entrepreneurial moment where the city has land in the middle of a housing crisis. But as was mentioned, there's more than just housing that's needed at some of these sites that don't have even any infrastructure, much less retail services or, you know, parks, open space, access to transit. So I know you're wrestling with the whole gamut of how should this thing unfold, and I'm sure you'll hear from other folks in the audience who have more to say about the Cow Palace or about land that they own, but it does seem like the city, finding the right partners and master-planning this thing holistically is going to yield, I think, as staff report mentioned, you know, a more efficient end result, because you can get traffic routed in the right locations if you've got the ability to cross property lines and things like that. Very complex undertaking. I can only imagine the parade of neighbors with all of the legitimate concerns coming through here, so I would suggest that separating yourselves a little bit from that process until the plans are ready to come forward to decision-makers makes a lot of sense. We did just recently finish something in El Cerrito where the city did upzone through a specific plan a lot of properties, and then, once that specific plan was done, then they offered up a property much like this. It was owned by a successor agency.
Okay, I'm going to need you to wrap it up.
So my point was, I think that the city could undertake that process, but I think you're going to get more value from the private sector in partnership by doing the master plan together. Let the owner-users of these buildings, be it retail or residential or anything else, let them be at the table in shaping how their product gets built, because as was said about the site plan, that was a nice yield study by an engineer, but they're not in the apartment business. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wheelan. Okay, those are all the speaker cards I have. Let me see what I can, oh, got another one? Okay, come on up. All right. Daniel Sacks, come on up, Mr. Sacks.
Hi, thank you for letting me speak.
Sure.
So I agree with much of what is said here. The yield studies are a nice starting point, but an early, an initial test. They don't, I think, reflect some of the difficulties and challenges of the site, not only sort of the access, but also the grade and the steepness that is onsite there. I think it bears, it requires a lot of further study to really get a sense of what is possible You know, our goal has been to work with the city as a partner on the development of this parcel, as well as incorporating it into a larger, more substantial scheme with the Cow Palace at large. Our hope is to, is to work with the Cow Palace, to develop the Cow Palace's site, and to incorporate a design on the Carter property that is in coordination with that, and, and which enables both sites to be maximized and organized together. I think it's an extraordinary opportunity to do this, and to get a lot more value out of, and, value in terms of community benefit, as well as economic value out of the Carter site as well. You know, our goal had been to, and has been and is, to enter into and work with the city directly on the site. Our hope is to do it in ANA, in which during that period of time, we spend resources, both time, money, energy, personnel, to study the site in great detail and understand what is really possible there, and make a proposal, and work to negotiate out a possible deal with the city. We think that in doing that and engaging in that, in that kind of an agreement and that kind of a partnership, that we'll be able to come to a proposal that works best with the city and for the community, and allows the site to be studied and worked on properly. We are committed to producing as much affordable housing on the site as can possibly be done. Our expectation right now is that we would do about 50% of the total units as affordable. We work with, we'd either build it directly or work with folks like Bridge Housing or others to, to put that together.
Okay, I need you to wrap it up.
Yeah, thank you. That's, that's all.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. I think I have one more, and that is Bill Vera.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I appreciate it. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor.
Good afternoon.
Council members and staff, thank you. You know, looking at this from the city perspective, in our mind, it's really about the best means to deploy an asset, an affordable housing asset in particular, and how to maximize the potential and expeditiously create, with the greatest degree of certainty, a deliverable product. You know, we all acknowledge that the site is challenging, but I'd like to make three points. The BKF studies are useful in some respects, and that they identify the need for much greater study and more due diligence to really understand what the property can potentially yield. The property needs entitlements. It doesn't have zoning, and it's not, it doesn't have appropriate land use under the general plan. In the housing element of the general plan, it identifies this fact, that it needs to go from commercial to residential. So that's a part of the process as well. It will be a challenge to execute. We all talked about the topography, the wetlands, the fill, the lack of infrastructure and utilities, and the general plan again recognizes these facts when it talks about the complexities and the integrated nature in which this property should be developed. It talks about, so much so, that in the land use element 3.2, it talks about the need for comprehensive land use planning, integrated and coordinated land use plans, and streetscape plans. And again, under the land use, under the housing element LU 24, it speaks directly to what Cy West's endeavors have been as of late under the MOU that we have with the city, which is to really coordinate the developability of this land with the adjacent 25 acres, 13 of which we already own. So looking at it from our standpoint and understanding, you know, kind of the experience that we've had on the property thus far- that we've had on the property thus far, and the due diligence that we've undergone, it does make the most sense, in our opinion, to work on an integrated, fully coordinated planning effort. You know, as the adjacent property owners, our preference would quite frankly be that the city maintains a seat at the table, you stay involved in the master planning process along with CyWest, and we work through to coordinate the most efficient plan that could be expedited and implemented. The best results, we believe, will be done that, you know, will be yielded that way, and the highest likelihood for success will be in a coordinated manner. Without the need for anybody or another developer sandwiched in between, we believe that the property can then be disposed of or sold to directly the builders of the affordable product that is most appropriate for the land.
Okay.
We'd like to see 100% affordable on the site. We're looking to develop our site with multifamily, more market-appropriate or market rate.
All right, I need you to wrap it up.
And retail in the quarter.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, those are all the speaker cards that I have for today. So let me start the discussion. So I think the idea of what we do with this property has to reflect, and we need to consider this master plan that has been referenced throughout the report. Because obviously, our goal, I mean, one of our goals is clearly to have some affordable housing. But in line with that, we need to figure out what is the best way, not only can we provide affordable housing, but also to make it fit the community so that we can develop it in such a way that we will reignite, ignite, some kind of positive change in that community. We all know the struggles the Bay Shore has had over the years. We all know you need more than just housing. You need a shopping center, a Safeway, even maybe a clinic, a post office, something. But we clearly understand the suffering that you guys have had. And so, our aim, I think, and I'm just speaking for myself, but I'm sure the council will say so themselves, but our aim is to not just establish some kind of affordability, but to make it so that the community is whole, and that we do it the right way, so that we can have some more viability in the community, we can have more businesses perhaps prosper, and we can give more services to the community that you desperately need. So with that, as I think the backstop, let me also try to focus our discussion today on two things. So, we need to figure out the land use concept, number one. And then, when we figure that out, I think we need to focus on how we're going to dispose of the property, what options we're going to choose. So those are the two things I hope we can come out of this meeting with. So the land use concept, now, according to the report and recommendation, there are three concepts: the high density, the medium density, and the combined high and medium density. Now, I'm hopeful that one of those concepts will work, or maybe a modified version of that if the council so chooses. I guess my first, let me start the question. My first question is, with respect to the three identified options, how locked in are we if we were to choose one or the other?
Well, I don't think you're ever really locked in.
Okay.
I mean, at this point, it's just sort of a direction for staff, and particularly depending on how you're going to choose of disposing the property, it sort of is the baseline that staff would use in discussing this with, you know, the neighboring landowners or a potential developer. But we have to kind of have a baseline for the conversation of what we're looking for. And then I think the different development types are more conducive to different types of affordability. So depending on the level of affordability and the quantity of affordability, there may be one product that is, you know, rises to the top. So if you're looking to provide, you know, a project that has deeper affordability, then probably the higher-density rental concept would be better at furthering that goal, just as the townhome product would be more likely to further the goal of moderate-income homeownership. So I think, too, when you think of the affordability levels, that can help inform the development pattern as well.
Okay, all right. Let me open up to my council's questions. Who wants to go first?
Vice Mayor.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For staff, I have a couple of questions. How about 2.7 acres owned by San Francisco? Is anybody talking to them?
At this point, there are no conversations with the Cow Palace. That's partly why there is some desire to get direction on whether there is an interest in master planning.
Yes.
And working with the neighboring property owner and with the Cow Palace. So if there is direction to do that, then, you know, it's time to sit at the table and try to work together to come up with a master plan.
Thank you. It's my understanding that the Point Martin development will be coming soon as well? And have we considered that?
The Point Martin project is going to be on the west side.
Side, yeah.
West side. It's separated by Carter Street, so, I mean, we didn't come to that, that we would work with them directly on developing our parcel. But they are moving forward. It's approved, it's entitled, and they're actively pursuing a final map to do their development. And perhaps, you know, that development group, if the council were to select an RFP process, that could be a developer that we could include on the notification.
Thank you. I'd just like to make a comment, if I may. The mayor alluded to it. My main concern, and the only reason I'm giving these concerns is based upon what I've heard this evening, and also placing myself if I was going to move out there. We need retail. We definitely need retail out there. I'm concerned about traffic on Carter Street. It's already busy to the inclusion of Point Martin, and whatever we decide this evening, we're going to have an abundance of additional traffic, so only two lanes, in and out. We also have to consider, again, the public transportation, the amenities, and additional services that will be provided, such as police and fire. This is what I'm going to be looking into as well. We do have a housing crisis, and to my council members, I'm against the high density, the very high density, because it doesn't appear to me to be very realistic. Can you go back about four slides, please, to one of, that one? Now, if I were living in building number A, and to the far-right side, and if we have seniors or disabled persons, and that's the garage, they have to traverse the whole building to get to the garage? That doesn't seem to me to be conducive. The same thing with building D? I mean, C. I think I've made mention about this before. Can you go back another slide to the medium density? Now, that one there, pretty reasonable, and the first slide, please, the other one.
Click to mine?
Uh, back to this. Oh, let's go back. Okay, the combined.
Oh, okay.
Now, the combined.
There you go.
Well, the combined density, now, if I see the townhomes to the far left, who's to prevent them from using the apartment garage? And yet, all those apartments, if you're far on the east side, to make it to that garage is difficult. So, that's something I would be thinking about. I think I made that point, a concern before when I saw these diagrams. So lastly, overall, we have a few parties involved who would really want to work on this property. The best thing that we can do is we get folks to work together. This includes CyWest, BKF. I didn't know what part they play in this, only was that there was, it was put out to them to give possible renditions. But I think we owe it to others, with the combination of CyWest and DECA, to provide renditions to what we feel might be best for the community out there. Tonight, I'm only seeing BKF, and I'm sure there's a lot more we can do. So as the mayor made mention, we got three options: either a targeted request, either it's a sole source, and there was one other one, sole source, targeted request, and there was one other, so...
RFP.
Oh, that's the first one, RFP, which they are more creative and competitive. So, thank you for that, and that's all I have.
What is the quickest way to get to, let's get this project done, out of the three dispositions?
I think they all have challenges. I mean, I think, you know, picking a single developer now may seem like the quickest route, but what are we selecting them to do, and who are they ready to work with? And are they, you know, do they have control over all the pieces that, you know, would be likely in a master plan scenario? So, there's bumps in the road with all of them. The RFP process, while I think it has some front-end time, I think you would see some concepts that maybe we're not seeing. To answer the Vice Mayor's question, BKF was retained by the city just to draw some scenarios, but these aren't the only scenarios. There could be a lot of other things, more creative approaches, ways of designing the apartment buildings where the parking's tucked under. This was just sort of a first blush look at, you know, carrying capacity. So, I think in the long run, especially, what I'm hearing is that there's really an effort to try to get retail and services out there, that some sort of scenario where master planning is part of the process. I think at the end, you'll get a better product, and you'll know what you're looking for and what to ask for, if you have it sort of all planned out ahead of time.
Okay. Did you have a question?
Dr. Rod?
No, I'm asking, did you have a question? Go ahead.
Actually, yeah. So when Ms. Mother said, when you mentioned the, there were three additional things that we could do, like maybe additional studies needed, appraisal, I believe, and for entitlement of the land? Because what I see here is, like you said, this is just a concept, and I think we need more in order to even make a decision like that for the capacity, because when it has written on here, potential site constraints, not limited wetlands, habitat areas, endangered species, those things have not even been considered. So it really doesn't even give us the real concept, because maybe in the topography, some of this is not realistic enough. And I see our honorable Mr. Brown here, and I didn't know if they are partnering with us, or on their SF part, or anything like that. Thank you for being here. And I didn't know that that's a part of it. Are they a part of the SF, a part of this, or like Ms. Vice Mayor asked? This is just our, this one piece, right?
DeCA, who's shown an interest in developing our parcel, and has also expressed interest in developing the Cow Palace property as well.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that clarity. Yeah. So my question is, is that this concept, like you said, there's many concepts, and with a master plan and more detailed, because I want places actually for veterans, affordability, I don't think that, I hear other cities also with that, and the seniors and the disabled. So I don't see, I think we need to consider, this is it. So we do have to be, we want to be expedient, but at the same time, I think we really, this is the last thing for the Bay Shore, and we want to give them, as the mayor alluded to, that we have to give them, they've been waiting forever. So, some way that we got to get the retail and access and parklets and places for kids to play, and age-friendly. Because I think that we're going for the age-friendly, as Vice Mayor has been working on. So we need to continue the age-friendly over into that concept as well. And also, we're also working on Vision Zero. So that also, I would like to see that included for, in the transportation and the access in and out, to make sure that the pedestrians' safety bicyclist or what have you, Vision Zero, be looked at as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Giovanni.
Thank you, Mayor.
Dr. Rod, did you have any questions?
No questions, I guess, just feedback, concerns. I'm just glad that these are just, you have three options that are preliminary designs, that everything is not set in stone yet, so that the public understands that this is not set in stone, just echoing the Vice Mayor in terms of efficiency and traffic. I think some of the preliminary designs right now, they don't look efficient to me as of yet, and I understand that's what they're working with, is because it's not a unified plan yet, there's not a unified master plan. So I think that as we evolve and we go further with more studies, and with more deeper dives in terms of how we can best unify a master plan, I think the transportation will be a little bit more efficient. Including that, too, is that, you know, the Bay Shore feels like an independent area of Daly City, so there has to be a set of identity that exudes the Bay Shore community there. So I would love to see murals, I would love to see, like, statues or something that represents the Bay Shore, right? There was this concern about the Cow Palace losing its essence of being an agricultural district. What are some ways that we could still have that type of remembrance or feel of what that area used to be? Instead of it just being like a regular suburb, where you could just pass on through and just like, oh, cool, just like a regular old thing. But what is something that we can have that can have that essence of, like, this used to be this in Daly City? Right? Because we don't want to lose that essence and that culture of what that area used to be like. And I want to echo all the speakers, the Vice Mayor, and everybody here, is like, we do need more community benefits, we do need grocery stores, we do need groceries and retail, because that's really, really important. But I think we're on the right path in terms of having people in the discussion, and then having these preliminary designs out, and then I'm looking forward to fleshing this out even more.
Okay. So, let's go through this, the points that we need to decide. So with respect to the land use concepts, the high-density, medium-density combined, I think we can, I mean, my preference is the combined. I think that eliminates the sort of restriction for just high-density or just medium-density. And so I think it's a good compromise if we combine it, and we still know that it's not locked in, we could still change our mind, but as a starting point, I think a combined high and medium-density option is going to serve us well. So, any comments on that?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I echo moving towards a combined-density concept, because I mean, it also affords opportunity for others, if the townhomes become ownership models, so that it also gives an opportunity for ownership. So, in that regard, if the apartments are rental, and seeing the townhomes as an ownership opportunity, that's something I can see that gives a breadth of people, the opportunity from majority of ranges, right? Like, we also want people to have the opportunity to have own, and then maybe utilize home ownership opportunity programs, et cetera. But I agree with you.
All right. Any other comments?
Just one.
Go ahead.
Included in that, in the high-density, that could also probably include the Bay Shore School, maybe the... School, maybe the, I know they're in talks with maybe the Midway, but, about teacher housing, but to make sure that in conversation, that we make sure not to forget that, because they only have that one school. And that, I know that the staff and the affordability in that area with our veterans, can that be a part of the mixed density as well and the low income? Tatum?
No, in this scenario, for example, if you wanted the, you know, the apartments either 100% or a portion of that to address very low-income needs, you could do, set aside for specific critical populations.
Okay, for the critical populations. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Giovanni. Any other comments?
Thank you, Mayor.
No. How about you? Are you good with combined?
Yes, I'm good with combined. I have to echo Councilmember Manalo, because this affords the opportunity to folks to also purchase a home. If it's all high-density, if it's all apartments, I think it's really going to put a strain on the community. And I'm already trying to think of a name as per Dr. Rod, maybe Daly City Green Pastures or something. But, yes, yes, Mr. Mayor, combined.
Mr. Rod?
I think maybe you have every other one.
Okay. Great. Great. Okay, so let's go on to talk about the disposition. Now, let me say this. So I am a believer in getting to yes as fast as we can, all right? Now, so I don't like a lot of bureaucracy, and I don't like to waste time. And I would like to see this, so we've been promising Bay Shore stuff for the longest time. And what I am fearful of is opportunities like this will not come again, all right? There is a limited window of opportunity. The economy is good, we got the right council sitting here on the dais, and we want to move. And we have that opportunity right now. And so I'm all about trying to pick the option that will best serve the community by getting this done. Now, I guess my question is, all the things that Mrs. Giovanni said, right, all the requests she made, all the concerns she had, which are completely valid, I am assuming that whoever we decide to be our developer, if you will, will know well in advance what her concerns are and will have the opportunity to address them and incorporate them in the master plan, right? Okay. Or not a master plan, but it would be incorporated in whatever project or whatever scenario some developer comes up with. They would know what her concerns are, what his concerns are, and be able to fit it in as what we want it to be.
Well, I'm sure the developers would have a sense of what those issues already are, but the master planning will sort of lay out infrastructure and will identify some of those more specifically, and then it assigns a development program to the parcels. And, I mean, one of the things about a master plan is, obviously, our property isn't the ideal shape. So one of the things that would have to be considered is, you know, are we going to follow those strict property lines, or is there a way to adjust them so that the development makes more sense? I mean, with the topography issues, you know, what we want to create is a more cohesive development, and you don't want, you know, one development down here and they have to go all the way out to Carter Street just to get to the retail that maybe can, you know, ultimately wind up on the Cow Palace parking lot. You want to be able to go, you know, internal in the development to that, to those retail services. And so I think one of the things we need to consider is how whoever is selected can work with everybody at the table and figure out how this piece fits in the master plan, but maybe not exactly in that shape and configuration.
Okay. The request for proposals, I mean, how long do you envision a process like that will take?
I would say, you know, we, RFPs, the responses you get and the time you give developers will affect the quality of the responses you get. I think that you could do an RFP in a short amount of time.
What's that?
Two or three months. But that, giving a short, first, staff has to develop the RFP and distribute it and then give time for developers to respond. And the longer the development community has to respond, you'll get a more refined scenario. But if we're just looking to get a sense of what the market is out there and what the developer interest is, you could shorten the period they have to respond. So I would say anywhere from two to six months, depending on the quality of the responses you want to get.
To me, that's...
It certainly could be shortened.
Yeah. Well, then, what is the real difference in time between the target and the request for proposal?
Probably not much. It'd be the same sort of idea that you could, you know, make the review period longer or shorter, depending. Probably with a targeted scenario, there are developers, probably the council, or maybe even staff could help inform of who that, who those would be. And it would probably be development companies or people who are already familiar with the site, so that could give you a narrower response period. Because you're sort of targeting people who've already been thinking of the site.
But then what is the difference between a target and the exclusive? Because if we choose exclusive, we're selecting from a target group. I mean, essentially, there's going to be others who are going to vie for the opportunity. So what's the difference between having a target group who's going to vie for it versus an exclusive agreement where we're going to select from a group anyway?
No, no, an exclusive, well, ultimately, all of them end in an exclusive. Even if you do the big RFP, the end result is you select a developer to have an exclusive agreement with. What the third option was suggesting is that if the council is aware of a development group that they already want to work with, they cut straight to that developer. There's no competition or choice. Whereas with the RFP or the targeted RFP, you have proposals sort of essentially competing against one another and the council selecting between multiple options and scenarios. Going exclusively to an exclusive negotiating agreement means you sort of have a developer in mind that you already want to select.
Yeah. Okay.
If I could add a little bit further in that, in that respect. Usually, the exclusive, as Tatum has mentioned, exclusive negotiating agreement is a product of a targeted RFP. So let's just say you pick two developers, and the council can create the standards and guidelines that you would like in that RFP as to what you would like to see. And then the two or three developers would submit that proposal and the council would choose. As opposed to an exclusive going straight to an ERN, essentially, you are looking at the proposal that the developer presents to the council, and you choose and you enter into agreement with just that proposal. So the difference is, you're going directly into it without any guidelines that is set by the council, if you went directly to one source.
Okay. All right. Other questions? I don't want to monopolize the conversation.
No, no.
Mr. Vice Mayor, you always have something.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is easy. We don't have established guidelines, which we're trying to do tonight. So we've decided on combined density.
Mm-hmm.
And I think we should open it up to the developers, to give them our guidelines on combined density, see which developer can offer more affordability, yet at the same time provide the retail component, that we're looking, retail and commercial component. That's just my feeling.
Okay. Anyone else? Go ahead.
Point of clarification. So with what you're stating is, are we talking about our parcel? Or are we talking about an RFP for a master plan? I just need to, because I...
Those are two, and I'll let Tatum, because I'll just speak to, that's a very good question. I'll speak to the process. And Tatum, you can clarify. Right now, the discussion is to talk about a master plan. That was the initial, Tatum had mentioned, we had a preliminary master plan back in 2004. You could have an RFP to have a master plan, and then you would have it developed, you would have guidelines, you would have it entitled, the council would decide on how they want this to look, and engage in an RFP process for the development of just our parcel. So in that, in that sense, you are creating a process that's part of a bigger process, assuming you have everything already mapped out in a master plan that is developed and approved by the city council, and that's the marco coordinate. So that's one aspect. The other way is, you don't have a master plan in hand, and you engage the RFP process for the development of just our housing parcel. Talk about that further.
I mean, I suppose it could be another option where, I don't know exactly how it's going to look, but, because I'm hearing the desire to move fast, and also a desire to master plan is perhaps, you know, I don't know, if you offer the property to a developer on the basis of their ability and showing past performance and past history, because the other, you know, the third party to bring into this is the Cow Palace. And, you know, it has shown recently that they are even more working, setting out parameters for somebody to get the property in conjunction with master planning. I don't know if that's, I don't know how exactly we would form that, but we have three parcels there that we have to consider for our master plan, and there's three different parties.
Any other questions? Dr. Rod, do you have anything?
I don't.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Tatum, for the follow-up. I'm thinking about the word called, in the court of law, discovery. If the Cow Palace and if Cy West can work together and provide the same information, because I heard that to reach certain streets might have to infringe upon the Cow Palace. So if the Cow Palace would put out something that they're willing to let that happen, that the developers, they both, or three of them, that they know, so that they have the same information as everyone else, and we choose the best one. And then we can provide the E&amp;A. See, if I was developer, say, F, and I came in, but I never talked to the Cow Palace or Cy West, knowing what they were going to do, it would put me at a disadvantage.
Yeah, but didn't the Cow Palace just pass a resolution of some sort?
Oh, we're going to get to that resolution.
Yeah, yeah.
I got problems with that resolution, but anyway.
What was the resolution that was passed?
It's tonight.
The resolution didn't contain information as to the streets or the development of the property, only that the leasehold would, any property leased by the Cow Palace is to remain with Agricultural District 1A. And that is a question that I have, because if we got retail coming in, the land lease money goes to the agricultural district.
We don't get it.
But what about the taxes and the retail? And Daly City is going to be providing services. So we'll get to that later on, Mr. Mayor, because I have...
Okay.
But Madam City Attorney was about to say something, I cut her off. Oh, okay.
I'm just reading the...
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, so, go ahead, go ahead.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Tatum and City Attorney and City Manager, I just have a quick question on the, on the disposition versus request, the RFP. So I understand that, you know, we actually would like to do this, but we also want the best product, right? And when it says that number one will give us the best product, but yet I understand number two being the part where if we come down, like you guys did with the hotels scenario, and then you picked the best two, then that might work as well. We still, the aim is still getting the best product for the Bay Shore. That's, I mean, that's our goal anyway, I'm sure it is for everyone on the dais, I don't want to speak for them. But will that limit us in getting our best product? Since number one states that, but number two does not, under the RFP process?
I mean, I, at least, they both involve some level of competition. I think just one has a wider net, so you're just sort of reaching out to a bigger...
Oh, you're throwing it out.
Audience.
Yeah, I got it. So number two is where we target it, as the vice mayor alluded to, and then we can take it and then develop. And I think everybody is, hopefully, they're talking about the master plan, Mr. Mayor.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you, City Attorney.
So one final question. When you indicate in your report, when you're talking about a request for proposal or a target request for proposal, you describe the RF, the target proposal, the agency could circulate an RFP to select developers, which is a less formal process than the RFP process described above. What do you mean by less formal process?
Well, because, so an RFP is sort of advertised to the world. The world is invited to participate. This one is less formal, because, target is less formal, because we've selected and we've sort of personally invited certain developers or development groups to participate. But essentially, I mean, the selection process would be the same.
Okay. All right. So, go ahead.
No.
Who? You, I'm sorry. My back turned to you, sorry.
No, it's okay.
Go ahead.
So when you said the selection process would be the same, you're saying, and I think this is what Mr. Mayor mentioned earlier, that that means it would be the same timeframe of an RFP?
Well, yes, we could probably give a shorter turnaround time, because I suspect that we would select developers who've already sort of familiarized themselves with the property, so their turnaround time on the response could be quicker. So we could probably shorten the response period.
Thank you. And then I guess one other question, and I, is around the exclusive negotiation agreement, like, for instance, the program particularly around, like, the affordable housing program, part of the development, how are we able to kind of share what, for instance, veteran housing, teacher housing, or these types of components, where would that lie within in the exclusive negotiation agreement?
So, going directly to a source, when you want to have an exclusive negotiating agreement, like I said, it's usually a byproduct of some type of targeted proposal or RFP. Without a proposal before the city council, and then just, you know, because the E&amp;A is approved in public by the city council, you wouldn't really have those guidelines necessarily, because you'd go ahead and, they'd send a proposal to you, you might be able to say it, but you can create that guideline, but you wouldn't have a comparison necessarily. So you would probably say it, and then you'd look at your proposal, and if you were to have that considered before the city council in open session, that's what you would be voting on, that you would have those guidelines.
It would be through our...
You'd have to go through that process. And when you do an E&amp;A, it doesn't necessarily mean that you're going to dispose of the property. It's establishing those negotiation terms through a, through an E&amp;A.
Collect from the hotel.
That's correct. Right. So, you know, you basically hold it exclusively for that period as you come to terms with how you want to dispose of it.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
My final comment is, given the three options that's available, and I'm thinking... My final comment is, given the three options that's available, and I'm thinking back at your previous comment about this council and the willingness and wanting to move forward, especially in the area of housing, I too don't like bureaucracy, bureaucracy or bureaucracy. So I'm leaning towards the targeted proposal. Believe me, if there's developers out there who, it's incumbent upon them to know what each city is doing. And I'm sure there's some developers who have taken that initiative to stay in the mix and to work with this city to come up with a potential. And they're constantly working on it. So why let the whole world know? I don't have time for that. And I think we need to move forward and move with targeted.
Yeah.
That's my thought.
I agree with that. I could live with target. So long as we limit it to a certain few selected developers and let's move on. We need to wrap this up, but any other comments?
No, I also agree about the targeted, because that would, would that give us more than two to look at? Or just when we do the targeted?
Well, yeah, I think we could establish maybe another future study session or council or agency item where we establish the parameters for a targeted.
And we get our master plan in this?
Well, so, yeah, I mean, I suppose that's a decision point, too. If you're seeking to master plan it prior to doing a targeted RFP, or if you're looking to somehow elicit comment or developers who have the wherewithal to master plan and sit at the table and look at, you know, a bigger piece of the Bay Shore.
Ms. Manalo?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. As with the rest of the council, a target request proposal would also be what I would move forward with, with the caveat that we do put a date on the calendar already on when we would have the next kind of meeting. Because with the same sentiment as Mr. Mayor, like, I'd like to see this move forward more expeditiously.
Thank you, Ms. Manalo. Dr. Rodd?
I agree with everybody here on the council. I think we, we're on a good path in terms of what we can do in terms of creating these plans for the Bay Shore. But I think one of the, my essential concerns is just really getting the, the feedback from those in the Bay Shore. Because they're going to be ones that are going to be the most affected by all the development. And I want their voices to be heard and considered.
Nice.
Yes, definitely.
Okay, great. Anything else that you need direction on?
I just wanted to add that staff will try diligently to get this item on the next study session preceding the next council meeting. But that means staff has, you know, worked pretty expeditiously to get a list for you to consider at the next meeting. But we'll work our hardest to do that.
Thank you very much. Okay, this meeting's adjourned. We're going to start in a few minutes, our next meeting.